And the first matter, we want to approve the meeting minutes held on November 19th, 2019. Second?
Approved.
Commissioner Narenberg.
Four.
Commissioner Cosellano.
Four.
And Chairman Barr.
Four. Okay, we have one item this evening. Our agenda is one, Scarsdale Road, the removal of the smokestack.
Mr. Chair, if I could just interrupt for a second?
Yes, sir.
The applicant can obviously see there's only three members up there, so you would need an unanimous vote tonight, so it's your opportunity to adjourn or to go forward tonight.
I understand that we will go forward.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Charles Goldberg. I'm pinch hitting for Seth Mandelbaum, who's been here before from my firm on behalf of Riverview Condominium. We're here tonight to ask that the public hearing be closed, that the board issue a negative declaration, and that the site plan application be approved. There's really only one new item that's come with tensions since the last time we before this board, and that's the report of the engineer dated November 25th. I'm sure the board has reviewed that report. I would only point out that the conclusions, recommendations, he says in part, it is our opinion that the chimney is in grave condition, and we strongly suggest the chimney be demolished within the next six months. I think that's really the gravement of the situation here. And unless the board has any questions, I really have nothing else to add.
No, I think it's clear we asked for a third party, another engineer, to examine the structure and confirm that it's disrepair.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Okay, so we have a public, we're still open to the public, and does anyone from our town like to speak on this matter?
I'm Elaine Provenzano. I live at 11 River Street.
Elaine, would you mind signing in too?
I did.
Okay, thank you so much.
I did also see the report, and what was very apparent by looking at the report was the October 1st, 2013 inspection report. One of the recommendations was that there was a category one emergency. That was in 2013. We've talked about this before, about the neglect that the Riverview was in neglect of taking care of this. They were supposed to take care of it from the inception. I know they want to take it down, but it's not going to be that simple, especially for those of us who are residents that live right next to it. Unlike the average smokestack, this chimney was used to burn pharmaceutical materials that might still be residually part of the structure. What type of testing will be done to measure lead, mercury, asbestos, or other harmful materials that would need to be addressed to avoid exposure? And also in the report, it said that there was no testing of the elements. There may be a significant environmental impact in the removal of the smokestack, and how will that be mitigated, and what type of oversight will there be by an environmental entity such as the DEP? In addition to the air quality, the chimney is located very close to the Bronx River and could have a negative impact on the water and wildlife, and this should all be considered. Costs of repair versus removal. Antonio Leo asked back in September for how much the cost of repair was $500,000, and there was never an itemized bill, I don't believe, that was offered. How much will it cost for them to remove, remediate, and make reparation for the structure as opposed for the repair? And reparation. I truly, I feel sorry for the residents of Riverview who did not know they're responsible for maintenance on the smokestack, but someone was responsible. And there should be a significant cost for neglecting what the village stipulated in 1999 and ignoring the engineer report recommendations of 2013. There were and are grant funds available which would have reduced costs, and there has to be a repercussion for neglecting their duty. And it's obvious to me that even though they received these reports in the past, this is not something that they wanted to do, and their negligence put people in harm's way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeff Zuckerman, 24 Bronx Street, Tukahoe. I may not be quite as nice as Lainey was. This has been sitting with me for a long time. What I hear is it can't be fixed. Okay? Mars is 250 million miles away from here. We send spaceships up there. We have land rovers riding around Mars. The greatest engineers in America figured that out, but we can't fix the smokestack. We built the Tappan Zee Bridge. You've all been over it. It's an unbelievable marvel, but this smokestack can't be fixed. The people just don't exist. There's no engineers, architects, there's nobody who can fix this little 150-foot little smokestack. We built the World Trade Tower, but we figured that out, but we can't figure this out. They were going to take down Grand Central. Oh my God, it's in such disrepair. Grand Central. Somehow Jackie O came along, we've got Grand Central, and it's beautiful. I could go on and on and on with the world's most amazing architectural and engineering feats, but this can't be done. So what is it? Do you actually believe it can't be done? Just let me hear you say it. Can't be done. Impossible. No, we can't bring that. That crane that came through the Panama Canal and helped build the Tappan Zee Bridge. Nothing exists on the planet that can fix this thing. It's so dangerous, it's got to come down. So if that it? I need, because I need to know if I have to take this to the next level. Is that it? Do you actually, do you actually believe nothing can be done to make it safe? So if that's it, let's say that's it, nobody's answering me. I'm actually asking, you're going to vote on this. So I need to know, why are you voting? It'll be too late. When it's, when you voted already, then it's too late. I have a really strong suspicion you're going to vote to take it down. So then it, then it, then it's over. So I'm asking you, do you believe it could never be fixed? Ray, do you believe it could not be fixed?
Anything is possible if the funds are available.
Good, so you're saying it's very expensive?
No, no.
Very expensive?
You're going to re, have to rebuild the whole things you might.
Good, so there's an expense. So we have an expense involved. Right.
You're talking more money than this.
How much? How much is it going to cost to rebuild it? How much?
I have no idea what the costs are.
Okay, but that, but your argument is that it can be fixed.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. I'm a licensed engineer.
Right.
My gain is public health and safety, and public safety is in the mix, is in the mix right now. No.
But it wasn't like three weeks ago before this engineering report came down?
Oh, yeah.
Thing's been up for 157 years.
It's fine.
Good. Well, you think it could be fixed?
No, not at this point. It's beyond repair.
Beyond repair, even though we can do all the things. They can build the World Trade Tower.
Exactly.
Okay, good. Thank you.
The World Trade Center.
So, so, okay, so it's going to cost a lot of money. It would cost an enormous amount of money. Why didn't they do it? Why didn't they keep it up? You guys are here. You people are here to protect the community, not developers. Your job is to protect the community.
We are protecting the community.
Okay, okay, let's get to the cost. Let's get to the cost.
Wait. Anything, anything could be repaired, of course. There's a value to it. And this is beyond repair. Our engineer that looked at this thing has to be, it would have to be taken apart, there's, there's a process, and you have to understand and respect that process.
It's expensive. I hear you. David, I hear you. It's expensive. Going to be a lot of money.
Yes.
Okay? Okay. So let me get to the money angle. Thank you. Thanks for helping me out. We're going to get to the money angle, because I know it can be fixed. We all know it can be.
Absolutely.
Your engineer, you know it can be fixed. Of course we can fix it. We fix, built, the umpire, we fix, we can fix anything. But okay, we can't fix it, it's expensive. Let's get to the second piece, the money. We're all taxpayers. We decide not to pay our taxes. Don't pay it. 1998, I don't pay my taxes. Now it's 99. Now it's 20 years later. I owe the government an enormous amount of money.
Then they take your house.
They don't say, hey, it's too expensive now. You're off the hook. The other citizens of America don't get the benefit of your taxes. You're done. Guys, you're done. You don't have to pay. You didn't do it for 20 years, now the bill's too high, so we let you go. Is that how the IRS works? No. Now why are we going to work that way? How dare we work that way? I've got a million ideas, none of which you've even begun to consider. Let them take it down, and let them build it up again. 20 feet a year for the next seven years. It's 150 feet tall. Next year, it'll cost too much to do it all at once. So we'll get the right brick, we'll put up a tower, seven years, 20 feet, the next year 20 feet, 15 feet. It'll take seven, eight years. We'll get our smokestack back. We'll get it back. They don't get their fourth friggin' parking spaces. We get our smokestack back, and it'll be up for another 150 years, and we'll all have an unsightly thing for a few years of building it back up. But they got to pay the piper. We can't just let them go home without paying. The IRS doesn't allow it, and that's your job. Your job is to protect, you want to protect. You say, oh, we have, we have a safety issue. Good, take it down. Let's take it down. Then we build it back up. I don't care what it costs them. Had they taken care of it, we wouldn't be standing here now. And now because they let the bill get too high, you won't be the IRS. You're going to protect the developer instead of the community, and we count on you to protect Tukahoe when it's possible. And it's possible. It's possible. They got to put it back up. Take it down, put it back up. 20 feet a year, 10 feet a year. We'll wait. We'll wait. And our children and their children's children will have a tower to look at. They'll have a smokestack. We won't have to put up a plaque in here and say, oh, there used to be a smokestack, but this board let these developers off because they spent 20 years running up a bill, and now we decided that they ran up too big a bill. Well, too bad. I'm sorry for them.
We had good cop, bad cop, now good cop again. Claire Gorman, 24 Bronx Street. Actually, that was my husband. Anyway, you do have a choice here. You have a choice of either letting them take it down, or making them repair it, or put up something in it instead. That's the two options you have, and you know, it's up to you to decide that. If it's taken down, if that's approved, I hope there are conditions. Conditions that they have to do something meaningful. And I don't mean, the gentleman in the work session at $2,500, he was looking at for a plaque in Village Hall, that's insulting. It's just downright insulting. In fact, I would recommend an escrow account of $100,000, and they do a landscaping, and the village board would have to approve it, and put a historical marker, and that they have to maintain it for forever. And since they don't have a good history of following their conditions and maintenance, the escrow account's important because then it can be used to pay for maintenance that they may not do, which is a strong possibility here, because we have learned, and let's not make that mistake again. So that would be one of my recommendations. Also, I did speak to someone at the DEC, and they did say that as far as the river's concerned, that if people see any, and this is up to the building department to really check, if you see any kind of construction debris, anything going into the river, you to call them immediately, because that is not allowed. Somehow they have to contain it. And I know part of it is keeping it wet, so when it gets wet, there's a good chance there's runoff. So they said the building department, or any residents who watch it and see it can report it to them. Secondly, I also called the environmental planning at the county, because I was also concerned there with the Bronx River. They said you can make it a condition that the whole demolition plan goes up to county planning, and they can take a look at it to make sure that it's up to snuff as far as the environment and the area around the Bronx River. So those are some conditions you could add on to this if you decide that it must come down. But to let them get off scot-free is just downright wrong. Thanks.
Thank you, Claire.
My name is Dick Forliano. I'm the Eastchester Town Historian, which includes Tukahoe and Bronxville. And I've been town historian for 30 years, and I love coming to Tukahoe, because Tukahoe is the center of our history since the end of the American Revolution. But I'm not here to give a history lesson. The word reparations has been used, and when I look at the information that I've learned since September 17th, the, I do feel bad for people who have bought condominiums and the financial liability that they were, I don't know if it was purposeful, or just ignorance, or something else, but in 1996, when they took over the complex, it was recognized not as an eyesore, but as an historic structure. I know some things about historic preservation. I'm not an expert, but one of the things about historic preservation, it doesn't matter if you're on the national register. It doesn't matter if you're a landmark. You need local preservation laws. But in this case, you guys did your due diligence, and I want to thank you for all your efforts. And I know we all serve on different boards in the town, but you did hold their feet to the fire. It was 1996, it was, the smokestack was recognized as an historic structure, and the Riverview condominiums were instructed to maintain it. When you had your independent contractor, structural engineer look into it, in 2013, the Riverview condominiums were told that unless they did due diligence, it would come down. Now, we do have a building department here. You have one man doing all the work. How much can he really hold their feet to the fire? But you're destroying, you're desecrating an historic, something that's historic, I went over this before, to many generations of people who came here. And we can't just allow this to happen. There has to be reparations. Now, this is really not your prerogative, this is really that of the village board. And I am so proud of the village board. Tukahoe Trolley, tours, books, Phil and Alice aren't here tonight, but I come every, whenever I can on Wednesdays. We have preserved the history of Tukahoe. You see the, this here, you see it out, out in the hall, all over. You go right next door to the, help me out, what's the name of the assisted living place here? Fountains. It's filled with memorabilia of Tukahoe history. And yet, when I heard the managing director and the people, and I've actually, people have called me and said, we really were unaware. Well, that's not an excuse. We've been working so hard to tell about the great history of Tukahoe. I gave to, submitted, there are 20 structures in Tukahoe, and there are 10 structures in Eastchester, and we really have to look into historic preparation, preservation. But what we're really talking about are adequate reparations, and there has been negligence on the part of the people who manage it. And I feel that the people who, in the Riverview condominiums, who should be really angry at, are the people who have ignored laws, sold them a bill of goods, told them it's an eyesore, and it really bothers me to no end that this recommendation. And, you know, I would say that we have a lot of work to do, including myself, to continue telling people about the great history of Tukahoe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sal Provenzano, 11 River Street. I'm going to real, I want to focus more on the safety issue of it. And I agree, Ray, you know, safety is paramount. As much as the smokestack holds a special place in a lot of people's hearts, the safety of our community is more important than a smokestack. So at the meeting, I guess a few months back, there was a gentleman that lived in the condominium complex that pointed out that there were, there's a danger that if the smokestack is struck by lightning, that somebody could get hurt. And I, and he said, I found it on Google, so I did the same thing. I Googled it. Sure enough, there was a smokestack up in Massachusetts, I guess Havermill, Massachusetts, that was struck by lightning this past year, and they had to end up taking it down because it was too dangerous. They had to take it down brick by brick. I also Googled, "smokestack demolition gone wrong." I suggest everyone Google, "smokestack demolition gone wrong." There was a smokestack that was being taken down, I believe it was in Virginia in 2015. It's a CNN story. You could see it on YouTube. And they had a, a construction crane that was taking it down, and they took it down the wrong way, and it came down right on top of the construction crane. And thank God, the operator of that crane had a cage around him, they had to dig him out of it. So there's two things. First of all, that smokestack that came down in Virginia, there was nothing around it. Okay? So when that thing fell, it, it wouldn't have affected Riverview, and it wouldn't have affected the fountains. This smokestack would have affected them. The second thing that I saw in that video was when that smokestack came down, there was a plume of smoke that was very similar to the World Trade Center when it came down. Now, we've been talking about asbestos, we've been talking about materials that are in there that we don't even know about. I could tell you right now, if whoever is going to take this thing down makes a mistake, it's going to have a tremendous effect. We talk about costs now. If that thing comes down, they're going to have to evacuate the fountains, and they're going to have to evacuate Riverview in case there is a mistake. What's the cost associated with moving the assisted living patients out of the fountains and their conditions, and the, the folks that live in Riverview? Which, listen, I feel badly that they were sold a bill of goods. I mean, I tell you, I would not want to be on the condominium board association, because I think that these residents have recourse against them because they did not, I'm assuming from the, the testimony of the, the people that were here a couple of months ago, they had no idea that they were supposed to maintain this. I hope they have a directors and officers insurance policy. So what I'm saying is, I agree, safety is paramount. But if you just Google, "smokestack demolition gone wrong," you can see what could happen. And that was in a open field. It wasn't next to two structures, one of which have elderly people in there that are really not portable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Luigi Marcogia, 162 Lake Avenue. I live right across the street from the Riverview and the fountains, and it's really a shame that it's come to this point. And I know a lot of people have spoken about it, you know, and I guess that, you know, what we're, what we're thinking about now is removing it. When it's, when it's removed, and a lot of good points were made about, you know, if it is removed, potentially the chemicals coming out of it, or the asbestos, or whatever might be there, so we have to make sure that, that's ironclad and that doesn't happen, obviously. But what is the cost to remove it? And, and when it's removed, what is the process? Are you taking off brick by brick?
Well, you know, and many people brought up the possibility of, you know, asbestos or anything, chemicals in that stack. So through the building department and approval, it would be demolished, brick by brick, going from the top down, and there was a whole process of abatement, possibilities of, you know, dust and contamination, as Claire brought up, with anything getting into the water. So there's a, there's a whole, we have to do our due diligence, and we're a responsibility of how that structure is taken down. And there's a whole environmental concern there, and I grant it, and that's going to be recognized. And I think the applicant, when they go before the building department, this all has to be addressed accordingly. How the demolition, and I think they've gotten numerous proposals. Michael, do you know of the process, what they're anticipating? I mean, they're not going to put a wrecking ball to it, but they'll start dismantling it because of the proximity of other structures.
I, I haven't been pervy to the demo plan, but I think it's been submitted to the building department and waiting for a review from Bill, so.
I would think it'd have to be surgically removed.
Yeah, well, once, once this board either approves or disapproves the demolishment of it, or the demo of it, then at that point, we'll look into exactly what we're going to need for them to take it down. I'm sure it'll be an extensive plan in place, plus they'll be working with the police department and other municipal employees to make sure that stuff's done according to the way we need it to be. And also, talking about the county planning, if the building department feels that it's fit, then we'll send it up to them as well, whatever we need to do. But I haven't been pervy to that, because that's Bill's, you know, position to look into the, the demo plan, and I think it's already been submitted, and their application's been, had been sent into the building department, even the fees, I'm assuming, were paid. So it's just a matter of looking at that plan. And I would tell you, I looked at it, but I did not, so I don't, I can't.
You know, to your, to your concerns, as Ray mentioned, public safety is the number one concern, and it's unfortunate that this structure is beyond repair, but we, if we proceed with taking it down, there is, we are going to do our due diligence in making sure that environmentally it's safe, it's not affecting our community, air into the water system. We really have to.
I guess, you know, part of the reason why I was asking, it sounds like they're going to surgically take it down, possibly brick by brick.
Yes.
And I'm not sure, like, I haven't seen the engineering reports or anything, but, you know, it was built at one point in time, probably brick by brick. Maybe if they save those bricks, maybe they can restore it. I know, like, for example, homes, from time to time, time to time, they need to be repointed. I don't know if the structure of this thing from the bottom up is corroded, so I, you know, but, you know, maybe it's totally beyond repair, but maybe not. Maybe there is a way that they can surgically remove the bricks and restore it back to its original form. So it's just a thought, because I know there are members of the community that would like to see that there for, for years to come. And it's got a rich history.
Yes.
For those that have been here for a long time. And it'd be a shame to see it just disappear overnight, so. Something to consider. I don't know if this board would consider that, or some other board, but I'd like for you to at least give it some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to say anything?
Has there been an asbestos survey done of this site? By a licensed asbestos inspector? Have you seen it?
My understanding is that it has. I don't know if it's been reviewed by the building department, but this is, if there's, if this gets approved, there's going to be a demolition plan that's going to have to be approved by the building department, and that's something that they're going to have to be aware of. Mike's listened to the public comments. We'll make sure Mr. Williams listens to the public comments and just take all this into consideration.
Okay, because Department of Labor.
But they're all good.
It has to be done.
They're all good points.
Okay.
So that's going to be up to the building department.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
My one concern is that I know from the beginning, I think, I think that this was when it was first, they were looking to take it down, they didn't realize what was really involved in taking it down. And I think there's, there's been a rush with a lot of what they want to do, and I think we really need to take our time and find out, do the environmental, know what's in there. what's in there and do it the right way. This cannot be rushed, this cannot be demolished, if that's what has to be. This really has to be looked at appropriately and find out what's in there. Because as I said, this was not your average smokestack. This was an incinerator, a pharmaceutical drugs.
Point well taken.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just want to add, the last thing I want to say tonight, and I said it before, why do they get a pass? Why do they get a pass? And Tuckahoe, I'm not going to rhyme with anything, why do they get a pass? And Tuckahoe takes it on the chin. Why is that? They should pay every penny that it would, would it cost to repair it or replace it, every penny. Why do they get a pass? The IRS wouldn't give them a pass. You don't give them a.
I just want to assure the board and the residents of the village that Riverview and its contractors will do everything required and more so to work with the building department, with your planner and with our contractors to make sure the environment is completely protected. We have to and we want to do that and we will do that.
Okay. Anyone else? Close, anyone else want to speak or? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I'd like to read three resolutions here. Resolution designating the Tuckahoe Village Planning Board as lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act for site plan approval to remove the smokestack at 1 Scarsdale Road. Whereas the Tuckahoe Village Department of Building received a site plan application received on September 12th, 2019, to remove the existing smokestack structure and replace it with four new parking spaces. Whereas the existing smokestack structure is a remnant from the Stone Mill Complex, which is determined eligible for a National Register of Historic Places on February 29th, 1996. Whereas the approval of the proposed action is classified as a type one action under Part 617 of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. And whereas, under Tuckahoe Village law, the planning board is the only entity that can grant site plan approval. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Tuckahoe Village Planning Board hereby declares itself as lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed action. All in favor?
Aye.
Second? Okay. Give me a second, okay.
Commissioner Narreber.
Four.
Commissioner Castellano.
Four. Four. Okay, second resolution adopting the negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act for site plan approval to remove the smokestack at 1 Scarsdale Road. Whereas the Village of Tuckahoe Department of Buildings received a site plan application received on September 12th, 2019, to remove the existing smokestack structure and replace it with four parking spaces. Whereas the proposed action to remove the structure is classified as a type one action under Part 617 of the environmental, State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. Whereas the planning board commissioned as an engineering firm, Grossfield, Markery, Consulting Engineers, to evaluate the condition of the facility. Their report delivered on November 25th, 2019, determined that the structural damage that has occurred to the facility is irreversible and the cost to rebuild the chimney stack will be excessive and is not economically practical. It is the opinion of the planning board that removal of the facility is appropriate as the risk of safety outweighs the structure's historic value. Whereas the planning board reviewed the environmental assessment form, EAF, Parts One and Two on December 3rd, 2019. Whereas based on the environmental assessment form submitted by the applicant and any supplemental materials thereto, the planning board has determined that there will be no significant adverse environmental impacts from this action as it concerns the proposed project. Whereas the planning board is the lead agency for this review of the proposed action. Whereas the planning board is the only entity that can grant site plan approval. Now therefore, be it resolved that, based on information included in the EAF submitted by the applicant and any supplemental materials thereto, and the criteria contained in the State Environmental Quality Review Act and its implementing regulations, the planning board hereby adopts the attached negative declaration for this type one action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Make a motion to approve the declaration.
Okay, second.
Commissioner Narreber.
Four.
Commissioner Castellano.
Four. Four. Okay, resolution three. Planning Board, Tuckahoe, in the matter of application, the Riverview Condominium, premises 1 Scarsdale Road, Tuckahoe, New York, applicant. Planning Board Resolution. The applicant is the record owner of the premises commonly known as 1 Scarsdale Road, Tuckahoe, New York, and known on the tax map of the Village of Tuckahoe as Section 36, Block Three, Lot One, the premises. The premises consists of a condominium complex with a smokestack that is not currently used, but has historical significance to the premises and to the village. The smokestack and complex is an historic reminder as to the industrial significance of the village. The applicant is now seeking to amend its previous approval site plan to remove the smokestack due to its deteriorated condition. The applicant has submitted with its application in support of the condition of the smokestack an inspection letter report dated July 17th, 2019, prepared by PCS Engineering, PLLC, which recommends the removal of the smokestack. Excuse me. We have heard from both the unit owners of the condominium in support of the smokestack's removal due to the condition of the smokestack and the financial burden on the owners and various village residents against the smokestack's removal due to the historic significance of the same. This is clearly, clearly a polarizing issue and both sides gave very impassioned arguments. Based on the hearing before this board, this board required the applicant to pay for a separate engineer's inspection by an engineer selected by the village to get a neutral assessment of the condition of the smokestack. The village selected GMCE PC to perform the inspection and said report was completed on November 25th, 2019. The report will be attached to this resolution and made part the same. The conclusion of Michael Markery PE from GMCE PC is that the chimney is in grave condition and they strongly suggest the chimney be demolished in the next six months. Further, the report recommends a safety zone of immediately established around the smokestack to protect the pedestrians and traffic in the vicinity of the smokestack. It should be noted that the safety zone has been established. Thus, based on the village engineer's report, the applicant's application to amend its previous approved site plan is granted and the smokestack is to be removed. Further, in applying seven to one to this application, the additional parking spaces gained from the smokestack's removal will have no impact on the surrounding area, will be a benefit to the unit owners. In turning to the conditions of this approval, the applicant, the Riverview Condominium, must take some blame as to the deteriorated condition of the smokestack. The prior approval of the board in 1998 was clear that the applicant was to maintain the smokestack and to submit annual inspection reports to the village by a licensed engineer no later than December 31st of each year. Excuse me. This was not done. In fact, the last engineer's report provided to the village was from 2013. So it's clearly the smokestack was not maintained or inspected per the approval. Therefore, since the village is now losing an historic part of the village due to the inactions of the applicant, the applicant will be required to make a donation to the Village Tuckahoe Village Beautification Committee in the sum of $15,000. This money shall be earmarked specifically for the enhancement of historic aspect of the village. It would be a preference to this board that there will be a commemorative aspect of the use of the money on the smokestack. It is also a preference of this board that the Beautification Committee work with the Village of Tuckahoe's Historic Committee and the village board to determine the best use of the money to further the history of Tuckahoe. Next, there must be a demolition plan approved by the Village, Tuckahoe Village Building Inspector before we can commence. The building inspector shall be aware of the public comment that asbestos may be contained in the smokestack. Lastly, as the village engineer has determined that smokestack is to be in grave condition, the applicant shall work with all possible speed to remove the smokestack as soon as possible.
Well, I think that was the motion. I think we need a second. So we need, we need a second on that.
Second.
Well, you made the motion.
I made, okay.
I made the motion.
I second it.
Commissioner Narreber.
Four.
Commissioner Castellano.
Four. Four. Okay. Thank you, everybody. We're going to, this be, this, there's no further business. It'll be adjourned.
Make motion be adjourned?
Yeah.